Thank you all for coming out to join us tonight for this important topic and we need to hear from you. So I'm so grateful to see so many coming out and we're looking forward to hearing your comments. If I could, I'd like to introduce the Charter Review Committee, starting down here in the LSU purple dress, but she's not an LSU girl. That would be Sheffy Robinson, Angela Beckos, Frank Lewis, Coach Clint Bryant, Tanya Barnhill. I'm Marcy Wilhelmie. This is Dr. Faser and Macy Lane Smith from the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government, who have just rolled in from Athens almost for the whole week. And then we've got Steve Fouchet, who also chairs the Form of Government Subcommittee. Next to him is Lee Powell, who chairs the Finance Subcommittee Subcommittee, Lonnie Wimberly, Charlie Coleman, and Rod "The Man" Pearson. Oh yeah, no, I'm yanking your chains. In the interest of getting everybody to have an opportunity to speak tonight, I just wanted to kind of go through some ground rules that we formed that county also utilizes. I don't know if when you came in, if you signed in on those sheets, it's helpful if you do, because sometimes we get questions that we are not in a position to answer, and then we have to follow up with people after the fact. So that helps us keep track of things. The way it'll start is we're going to have Carl Vinson begin with a slideshow that covers what a charter is, the various types of government and so forth. It's an educational piece. And then when they finish, if there are questions for them, we'll immediately allow those to happen. You can just come to this speaker right here, this microphone. And then when that's finished, we'll start asking people to file up to either render their comments or ask their questions. We're probably going to be furiously taking notes ourself, so we're just very grateful to have you all. All right. So I think without ado, then we will turn this over to Carl Vinson. Dr. Rex Faser.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. And as Marcy said, we're with the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia. And we've been tasked with assisting the Charter Review Committee in providing them with research and support over their review process. So what I'm going to do tonight, I guess I'd point it this way, there we go, is give you a little bit of an overview of kind of the process, as well as some of the kind of significant structures that the committee is thinking about and considering. So the first piece is the process that the committee is going through. It started off back in the spring when the Board of Commissioners appointed the members of the committee, although that has changed a little bit as we've had to replace a couple of members. But we're delighted to have the group that we have. The Charter Review Committee has been analyzing the current charter, and they've already made recommendations on removing certain parts of the charter, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And then the Charter Review Committee is going to propose a new or revised charter eventually after they make all of their decisions. That revised charter will go to the local legislative delegation, and the local legislative delegation, as well as other folks, will receive that. And the local legislative delegation will decide what to do with the recommendations of the committee. And assuming that they propose substantial changes, that would then need to go through the General Assembly. And so let me kind of walk you through kind of this process of a thorough review. And we have, let's see, can you hand me a copy of the charter book? So just to give you some sense of how substantial the charter is, as I make poor Macy Lane dig through her bag, this is the charter document with the enabling legislation, among other things, and they've had to review all of this. And we've also reviewed all of this to give them some guidance. And they're looking for areas that can be clarified, can be improved, and areas that are no longer relevant. And so they're making recommendations for deleting sections of the charter, for adding sections of the charter. And the other thing that's critically important is they're seeking public input, and that's part of what they're doing tonight. But also, at every committee meeting, there's an opportunity for the public to engage and to help folks inform the process. So the full committee meets bi-weekly on Thursday, so the next public meeting is this Thursday. After the public meeting, there will be Subcommittee meetings, the Finance and Form of Government Committees will, Subcommittee will meet. And significantly, the Charter Review Committee has already done a substantial amount of work. For example, they removed what we call anticipatory language. So when the charter was initially passed, part of the language of the charter said things like, "If Augusta-Richmond County consolidate, then X or Y will happen." Well, the government consolidated, that happened 30 or so years ago, and so that no longer needs to be in the charter. So they voted to remove those kinds of things from the charter document. They also voted to remove language that is duplicative, or essentially identical to language that is in the state constitution or the state code. Because if it's, if the state constitution or the state code were to change, that would supersede the charter. And because that supersedes the charter anyway, that language does not need to be in the charter document itself. And so they have voted to remove that language from the charter as well. The last thing that they voted to remove are those sections that are better dealt with in ordinance. And I'll talk in a moment about the differences between the charter and ordinances. But there are sections of things that maybe, for example, deal with compensation. Well, the compensation that was articulated 30 years ago is not the same compensation level that's necessary today. And so that is, that part of the charter would then no longer be relevant. But if it's in the ordinances, the ordinances are much easier to adapt and change, and it's easier to have that piece there. So a charter document is essentially the constitution for a local government. And it contains a variety of things. These range from kind of the governmental structure, what makes up the governing body. So in the case of Augusta-Richmond, the Board of Commissioners and the mayor. And it articulates the power and responsibilities of those offices as well. It outlines their official roles, and it also highlights the departments that will exist in general. It grants and limits powers. So this is just like the US Constitution in some ways, right? It tells the federal government that you can do this, but not that. And the charter can do the same kind of thing. It can say, "You can act on the following issues, but not these others." It creates the framework for local authority, and the basis that the governing body has to actually enact ordinances. And so without the charter, the local government wouldn't have the ability to create any local laws. So the charter gives them that ability. And lastly, charters should be designed to create accountability. That's one of the things that the committee has talked about a lot, is their desire to have a charter that is able to hold members of the governing body accountable, as well as the rest of the government accountable to the citizens. Now, in a charter, there are generally several issues that are covered. One is what we call incorporation of powers. This is simple things like the name of the government, Augusta-Richmond County, for example. It articulates the boundaries to some extent, although what we generally recommend is that those boundaries are described in general, and if there are kind of very unique notations, that those actually be accounted for in an appendix, or some other element that's more easily changed, because if there were to be, now, that's not going to be the case in Augusta, in Richmond County, because the boundaries of the county can't change. But in a normal, in a regular municipality, they could change the boundaries by annexation. And if you articulate all of the boundaries in the charter, then when you annex it, you'd have to change the charter. And so in general, we try to recommend things like that be in an appendix. Again, the government structure, the legislative body, and the executive body, who's playing what role, who's in charge of the general organizational provisions, who are the administrative officers, is there a city administrator, is there a city manager? And again, I'll talk about that a little bit. What's the role of the attorney, the clerk? And then it also highlights the role of the judiciary, which in the case of Augusta-Richmond is a little bit unique in the set of courts that you have, talks about elections. But again, much of election law is covered in state law, and so you don't have to have those nuances in the charter itself. But you want to have note, for example, that it follows state law. It highlights taxes that are allowed to be collected and the fees that can be charged, talks about borrowing authority, and financial accounting, and budgeting responsibilities. And then there are going to be general provisions that don't neatly fit in any other category. Now, we exclude things from charters, and the things that we exclude from charters are things that you might want to change on a more frequent basis. This will include zoning and land use laws. Zoning patterns may change over time, and that's better handled in the ordinances than it would be handled in the charter. Public safety and health, so rules, whether that be around criteria for healthiness of, in care of restaurants, et cetera, business regulations, business fees and licenses, environmental rules, traffic and parking regulations, expectations for public conduct, and then general administrative procedures, you know, how often the people will get paid, what the position classifications are, those kinds of things. So there are a number of reasons why we encourage local governments to update their charters. One is to modernize. Now, Augusta is relatively recent, in the last 30 years. But there are some local governments that haven't revisited their charter in nearly 100 years. And so as you can imagine, there are sometimes archaic language in there that's not relevant to today's world. And so that's one of the things that we sometimes encourage local governments to change for. But the other thing, the other things include mitigating risks. You want to minimize legal exposure by making sure you're up to date and compliant with the state code. You want to make sure that there are safeguards that will protect against improperly enacted amendments, among other things. You want to make sure the citizens have access to the charter document. One of the things that the Charter Review Committee has done has made it easier, and we appreciate the public comments that happened at our last public meeting, because as a result of that, there were some changes made to the website to make it more accessible and easier to access the charter document, for example. And so you can tell the committee is listening to you, because they're responding to those kinds of things. And we also very much appreciate staff and their very quick and timely response to making sure that those things are taken care of. And then, making sure I'm here on my notes. The other thing is that times have changed in the last 30 years, and so there may be emerging challenges that are relevant today that weren't necessarily relevant 30 years ago. And so as you think about making all those changes, the question becomes, how do you want to structure your government? And across Georgia, there are a variety of structures. Now, what I want you to take away from this is two things. One, that there are all of these dark blue counties, I say all, there are about eight of them, those are consolidated governments. So where a city and a county are merged, or they have just one consolidated government for the entire county. Places that you will have heard of, Columbus, Muskogee, Athens, Clark, your own Augusta-Richmond. But probably a couple that you haven't heard of, Webster County and Eccles Counties, those are very small counties. They consolidated for very different reasons. They essentially, their local governments were, their cities were going out of existence, and in order to have full municipal and urban service responsibilities, they consolidated those governments, and it gave them some additional opportunities that they wouldn't have had acting solely as a county. So they're now a city and a county. In terms of form of government, this chart highlights, and again, you can't see it, but there are little slash lines, and those slash lines highlight either a city administrator or a city manager in the kind of key executive role. And again, I'll talk about the differences that come from that. But I want to talk about kind of the key forms of government that are most common that we see. And probably, the one most people are most familiar with is what we call a mayor-commission with an administrator, or sometimes called a strong mayor form of government. In this form, the voters elect a number of officers, key among them are the mayor and commission. And the mayor and commission provide important responsibility. They appoint, and it's together, and it varies, it can either be a combined mayor and commission that make the appointment, or it could be just the mayor that makes the appointment. In the Augusta-Richmond case, it's the mayor and commission that make the appointment of the administrator. And that administrator then has responsibility for day-to-day operations, but they don't have full control over hiring and firing, budgetary responsibility, and some other things. Those are held back by the governing body. And so if you want to hire or fire somebody, that essentially has to come back up to the commission. So in this model, a strong mayor holds the primary executive authority, appoints department heads and officials, develops and submits the budget. And again, this is not necessarily the exact model that Augusta-Richmond follows, for example. But in the strong mayor model, the mayor plays a much greater executive responsibility, and appoints those key positions, and oversees the daily operations of the local government. A strong mayor generally possesses veto power, but doesn't necessarily vote on the governing body. Now, another form of government is the mayor with commission, this is a more weak mayor kind of scenario. In this case, the mayor and commission together make the appointment of the city administrator and other key officials, including department heads. The big difference here is that the mayor doesn't have any independent executive authority. They can't unilaterally direct the policy of the local government. They have to have essentially the entire commission with them to guide the affairs of the government. And so the administrator is taking their direction from that entire body. The mayor is essentially, in this kind of model in its pure form, is subordinate to the council or commission, because it's the decisions of the commission as a whole that are guiding and directing. And the mayor in this case would have primarily ceremonial responsibilities. Now, again, Augusta-Richmond, one of the interesting things is that even though we show these as kind of archetypes, if you will, you can pick and choose to some extent among some of the features. And so when you look at Augusta-Richmond, it doesn't clearly kind of line up into one of these power kind of models. For example, the voters recently chose to give the mayor a veto, not a veto, a vote on the county commission. And there are a whole bunch of reasons why you as an electorate chose to do that. But that is one of the ways that is different from the archetype of general mayors and chief executive officers. So another form that is quite prevalent across the state is the role of commission manager. And in a commission manager form, you have the mayor and commission that act somewhat like a weak mayor, but they appoint a city manager. The manager is different from an administrator in that the manager generally has the ability to hire and fire department heads, has budgetary authority, and is the chief executive in charge of the daily operations of the local government. And so the key difference is that if they aren't doing their job, you can directly hold them responsible for not doing their job. Where in the administrator form, if they aren't doing, if the city's not doing its job, is it because the commission isn't giving enough authority, or is it because the administrator isn't giving enough direction? And it becomes much more messy. In the council manager or commission manager form, it is much more clear who has the ultimate administrative responsibility, and that is the manager in that case. So the manager is appointed to and reports, reports to the commission as a whole. They, again, services the chief executive, they have broad authority over operations. And again, the difference between an administrator and a manager is primarily in that ability to hire and fire. An administrator generally does not have that independent authority to do that on their own. A manager, on the other hand, does. So in both cases, the administrator would be, or the manager would be responsible for implementing policy direction from the commission. So they can't So they can't act as rogue agents, because they are ultimately responsible to the commission. Now, another form of government is what we call the commission form. And in the commission form, you don't have an administrator usually. You have the commission, and in that case, there often is not a chief elected executive. There are often just members of the commission, they may rotate who's in charge for some period of time or something. But they oversee departments directly. And so you might have, for example, the Public Works Department assigned to one commissioner, and the Engineering Department assigned to another commissioner, and Parks and Recreation assigned to another commissioner. And so those commissioners would be guiding the day-to-day operations, and any decisions, executive decisions, would fall back to those commissioners. Now, you can imagine that in that case, it becomes a bit more chaotic to manage those things, and difficult to get the kind of professional administration that you might want. So as the committee thinks about these different kinds of alternatives, they want your feedback. And so I believe we have some QR codes, but there's also this survey link that you can follow up here. And that survey asks for your perspective on the kinds of issues that the committee is grappling with. And last week, we had, no, a week and a half ago, we had over 800 responses already. I haven't checked, I don't know if Jeff has an updated number.
1172.
So we've got 1,172 responses so far. That's a long way from the ambitious goal of having everybody in the county fill it out, but encourage you and your friends to fill it out. And if there are some copies of the QR code, that if you want to take it and pass it around and share it with your friends afterwards, we would encourage you to do that. Because the more responses that we get, the better informed the committee is going to be on your perspectives. So that gives you kind of a broad overview of some of the kinds of choices that are facing the committee. And it's not an easy task. They've had literally hundreds of pages of documents that they've been wading through. And if you give the fact that we've given it to them multiple times, that results in thousands of pages of documents, and hopefully they haven't printed them, but some of them you will see, I don't see any of them carrying their notebooks, but they've got notebooks that are looking to be about this thick now, as they've been printing the kinds of stuff that we've been sharing with them. But we will continue to provide them with more information. This coming public hearing to the Finance, or to the Form of Government Committee will be presenting some of the research that we've been looking at on form of government to help them as they process through those. But I'll turn the time back over to Marcy. Thank you.
Macy Lane, you going to play timekeeper again?
Yes.
All right. All right, so this brings us to the point. Whoever would like to come to the podium, if you would just come on up and file in and be respectful, what we'll do is, Macy has a green card when you're getting close to three minutes, she'll go like this, and you'll know you're getting close.
We need to start with the people who signed up.
Yeah. Oh, good. Thanks, Tamika.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If we can read them.
Okay, very good. Angela Backus is going to come along with some written ones. If you have the ability to electronically fill out this survey, I think Carl Vincent has a clear preference for that in terms of being able to analyze it promptly and quickly. We're going to tell you toward the end of the evening where you can find this on the website too, but if you would raise your hand, if you would like to do it electronically and you want to see what the QR code looks like, she'll get this for you.
I'm asking QR. No, just help me. You're a person. Not to a telephone. It's a sound.
Very good. Okay, so Mr. Todd, you are top of the list. Do you want to let Jerry go first since he's right there? Okay. Former Commissioner Jerry Brigham. That'd be great if you could. Ms. Cooper, welcome, wherever, there you are. Glad you made it on.
Hang on. I'm Jerry Brigham. I was one of the first 10 commissioners elected, so I have a little experience of what y'all going through. The only catch was, we were handed a document and said govern. That was a little different. First thing I want to remind you, that there are 159 counties, and that we are mainly a county with municipal authority. We have certain duties that we have to perform, that cities do not perform. One of them is providing courts and a jail. So let's get that out of the way. I personally do not favor a strong mayor. I've seen over my lifetime a number of them. They tend to not pay attention to the rest of the elected officials. I think that under what we have now, that if you asked any of the original commissioners, and most of them since it, will tell you that we operate kind of as a commission manager form of government. I know when I was there, I expected the administrator to be the day-to-day person in charge of the employees. I expected the mayor to be the day-to-day person in charge of the administrator. And when all else failed, the commission would be in charge. I've never seen that fall yet. We've, I don't know where to start. My time's running quick. Okay, the first thing I would say, if y'all are going to do something, something that needs to financially be done, is that we need to eliminate or expand the Urban Services District. We need to change the way that we charge for fire protection and garbage services. The legislature has taught numerous times about doing away with fees, and we can always operate garbage through ad valorem taxes. And that's the way most cities do. Okay, I'm trying, I'll try like hard, but I need to get a few things in. I guess if you're willing to ask, I'm willing to give you my opinion. Cannot, evidently I can't do it in three minutes. So I'm going to pass this. Who'd I pass to? Moses?
Yes, sir. Madam Chairman, I'd love to yield my three minutes to Commissioner Brigham.
We do.
Moses, you know what? We don't always agree. But usually we could find a compromise if we worked at it hard enough. And I think that's part of the problem. I think we have commissioners at this point that aren't willing to try to find a compromise. I think that's bringing about a lot of this. But financially, I do believe something needs to be done about the Urban Services District. I think, as I said, there are 159 counties. If you look at them, I don't know any of them that runs with a strong mayor form of county. All of them runs by a commission. We need to make some changes. If you think the commission hires and fires everybody, you need to look at the school board. You can see where they vote on the agenda each month, on everybody they hire, everybody they fire, everybody they retire. If you look at a commission agenda, that is not there. That does not happen. Right now, the administrator hires everybody except department heads. Okay? That's a fact. I think that department heads carry out most of the policy of the government. They're the ones that interact in the people. When I went into government, the first time I was elected, I was elected to school board. Piece of advice was, y'all represent the public. Y'all need to be resolved unitedly on the way you govern. Don't mean we have to agree on everything, but we need to reach a point that we can agree on how we're governing. I think that's important to us. I think that, yes, we need somebody in charge. You know, you talk about hiring and firing, I have yet to have an employee that I remember recommending be fired. Every one of them that got fired, got fired by a politician, not on a recommendation, but on the fact that, one of them was the finance director. When we were there doing a budget, he cited that it was more important for him to go home for Christmas than it was for us to reach a compromise on the budget. The budget affects all of us. It don't affect any one of us, any different than another, but it affects all of us. I'm probably running quick on my time again. I'd rather, if somebody asked me a question, I can give you an opinion a lot easier than sitting here trying to come up with time. The, oh, on the commissioners, I'm a little different than the rest of them. A lot of people don't, I think we have too many with 10. I think we need to have 10 single-member districts commissioners, because that way we have a fair representation of the entire community. I do not particularly like the large commissioners, that's an expensive campaign. I get to vote, I personally get to vote for three out of 11 members. And if you change it to what I've heard, I'll get to vote for two out of nine. So it's up to y'all. I'm finished, I've gotten the green flag twice. I don't know what else I can say that would make any difference.
You may have to come back as a subject matter expert for future questions we're going to get. Okay, we have Mr. Todd, Mr. Brigham, Mr. Robert Nguyen, my neighbor is here.
My name is Robert Nguyen, I live at 3028 Lake Forest Drive. I chair, I own a business downtown on the 900 block of Broad Street, and also chair the Board of Augusta Tomorrow and the Clean and Safe Program Downtown known as ACE Downtown. First, I want to say thank you. I have no idea if y'all knew what you were getting yourselves into. It's obviously a lot of work. I've been watching some of the meetings, but thank you on the behalf of all of us for putting in the work and trying to get this right. All of my experience working with Augusta Tomorrow, with ACE, and just trying to improve things in downtown, has made it clear to me that we have a dysfunctional government. Anybody who you interact with, whose experience working with the city of Augusta would agree to this. This is not something that people really, behind closed doors, argue about. Our government is dysfunctional. I saw on the webcast Administrator Allen tell y'all she has 11 bosses, right? Nobody can work like that. That doesn't even acknowledge that Dr. Malik and Tamika Williams, they have 12 bosses, including Administrator Allen. The evidence for this dysfunctional government is all around us, okay? Go walk around Riverwalk, doesn't look great. Even the Warren Road Park here, it doesn't look great. Downtown Augusta, when I moved my office down there in 2015, there was litter all over the place. I think Garnett, I remember you saying you saw me walking around with a picker, picking up litter, okay? Because it drives me crazy to see it all over the place. We got some private citizens together to start the ACE program to fix that problem, and that group has accountability. They show up to work. They work hard. If they don't, they get fired. Unfortunately, in our local government, we don't have a functional system where that accountability exists. So that has catastrophic consequences for our community, and it has had catastrophic consequences for our community for the last 30 years. Really holds us back. We have incredible tailwinds. The Fort, we have Augusta University, we have a great healthcare system, we have Augusta National. We were here for Leadership Georgia, and a bunch of folks from all across Georgia came in, and they were sort of perplexed. You know, why isn't your community thriving? And the answer is as clear as day, it's because of our dysfunctional government. Last thing I'll say is, you have a generational opportunity. You really do. This may be the most important thing to happen in Augusta in 40 or 50 years. If we can fix how our government is organized, if we can make it so that it works for our community, then the next 30 years in Augusta can really be a prosperous, thriving community like in other communities we see in the southeast. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I know it's an incredibly difficult task. Watching these folks from Carl Vincent, they're an incredible resource. So you have the experts, you have the mandate from the commission to do this job and make a recommendation to the legislature. So thank you and good luck.
All right. Thank you, hon. And Ms. Jenny Wood. Tamika got some. Okay, in the absence of Ms. Jenny showing up, is Ms. Jenny here? We don't know. Okay, all right. All right. And then Tina. Good German pronunciation, so I'm not, maybe you can tell us how to do it properly.
Hello, my name's Tina Rothie. Oops, sorry. I'm from this district. Thank you for having it here. I did have a question about the process as far as like getting our whole community involved, and if you do come up with something, that we have this during a general election and not during a midterms. Half the people in the city show up for midterm elections, so I definitely think that everyone in this county, city should have the opportunity to vote, and this shouldn't be taken lightly. As he said, this is the most important thing that's come through here in 30 years. That's all I have.
All right. Any takers? General comments? Wishes for the town, what you would like to see going forward? I'd be real interested in hearing. Please come down.
Name an address.
Thank you.
Name an address.
Name an address for the...
Hi, Oliver Page, 5298 Cops Drive, Augusta, Georgia. Speaking to the experts, you showed a diagram with the different forms of government for the different jurisdictions in the state of Georgia. From your experience, which ones have been, have allowed their jurisdictions to be forward-thinking, progressive? We see everything that's going on in Atlanta and other cities, and even from a public transit perspective, that's transit, Augusta is lagging very, very far behind. Very, supposedly with the third largest city in Augusta, in the state of Georgia, but our bus service is towards the bottom end. And there are smaller cities that have a bigger bus service and carry around more people than what we do. And I think we've reached this point partly because of how the city is governed. But that's well before my time, so I just wanted to find out from, you know, from the experts, or will the report sort of give some examples of models that have allowed their jurisdictions to be, you know, forward-thinking? We have to be looking into the future, and we have to remember the past, but we're looking forward. Things that worked in the past may not work for us in the future. So if we want to go back to the past, we're going to make the same mistakes and be in the same position 30 years from now. Thank you.
Want to answer it?
What? You'd like?
I would like you to. I would like you to.
So, the first answer is, we see governments that have all kinds of structures function well. That some of it is the functioning, the structure that defines it. We do see, and we'll be presenting some research on this, that manager forms, for example, tend to be a little more efficient overall. But, that said, you can have administrator forms that are quite well-managed, and it in part goes to a comment that the commissioner made. It's about the trust and responsibility you place in that individual, and how well the governing body guides and provides policy direction. And so, at the end of the day, while I think form of government matters, what matters most is having a government that has a vision and is willing to work together to accomplish that vision. And so, and for those that want some more, I encourage you to come to the subcommittee meeting where we'll kind of dive in a little deeper on some of the findings of the research.
So, before you sit down, since we don't have anybody else signed up... Dr. Faeser, I would like to hear what other cities and towns are doing in terms of forming the overarching view of where they want to go. Augusta Tomorrow, I understand you're getting close to releasing yours. That would be very helpful to hear about as well. But if you could speak to what other communities do to get this overarching 25-year look forward?
So, one of the things that we see successful governments do is to engage in a regular strategic planning process. While that's not the only thing that matters, it does matter a lot in doing that on a regular reoccurring basis, so that you've always got a vision for the future. I do know that the commission is looking at a strategic planning event coming up in the near future. And I'm sure that they would be delighted to have some guidance from the community on kind of your perspectives. You recently had a budget survey where they were asking you, among other things, about how satisfied you were with some of the issues in the community. And I hope that you took the opportunity to fill that out as well. But it's taking the time to reflect on the community's perspective and doing that on a regular basis, so it's not a one-time thing, becomes critical in that kind of ongoing visioning process. And that's... While you could mandate a strategic vision in the charter that's normally not part of a charter document, but part of good management practices.
Excuse me for not... Mr. Edward Jefferson. Right? Okay. This gentleman wanted to speak. Reverend Williams. Don't recognize you in leisure attire.
Good evening. Do you want to do an announcement, sir? Okay, my name is James Williams.
It'll help for the TV audience.
Okay. My name is James Williams, and I live at 3408, excuse me, Pine Hill Road. And thank you for acknowledging me. As I sit here and listen, and just heard the gentleman say, and hearing some previous comments, and having been watching the comments of people who have spoken, I want to go back to the previous mayor that you had come before your committee a couple of meetings ago, which was, I'm not going to call his name in terms of who he is, but if you started about two meetings or so ago, your public meetings, he alluded to several things that was a concern when the charter was established. Now, I don't know how many of you in here was around during that time when the charter was established, but I was. And I say I was, not only I was, but I was a part of community action along with an organization who was very instrumental in having to give directions and advice to the charter and what would be beneficial to the community and to the citizens of Augusta Richmond County. We know how we got to the charter. For those of you who may not know, we know that this... We had two forms of government. We had a mayor for the city, and we had commissioners for... And we had commissioners for the county, which is some of the forms of government that you alluded to in your comments. And as a result of management and those kind of things, it became best for the county to help the city to meet some challenges that it had by consolidating the two governments, thus ending up with a consolidated government and having a charter. Charter was established. And when the charter was established, many people came together to work together in order to form the charter, thus ending up with what we had, that would benefit all the citizens. And that's the form of government that you have now, which you have 10 commissioners. You have the two at large, plus the district commissioners. And that was chosen to be the form that... Of government that we would have, simply because, one, it would be nobody in charge except the commission and the mayor. And it was said, and the previous mayor alluded to these facts, that he didn't have a problem with it, because he was able to work across lines and build alliances with commissioners and the community. He didn't have a problem with it. Prior to that mayor, there was never a complaint about the form of government or whether it was time. So, as a result of having the five-five, it was best to have a five-five commission to kind of force them to work together, work across line, in order to govern the charter, or the government. That was one of the reasons that we have what we have now. That mayor, and even this past commissioner, somewhat alluded to coming together, working together on behalf of the community and the position that you were chosen for was best and in the best interest of the community. And that's why it was not to be a black-white, it was not to be a racial issue, which we did have racial issues during that time, and we still do. Let's be factual about it. But it was designed to cause the governing electors to work together. That mayor, who was previously before you, alluded to the very fact that he was able to do that himself, because he forced... Not forced, but he formed alliances that caused him to have a good term during his period. Big pardon? My time has expired? Okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was just for general comments with no time that I asked, okay? Thank you so much.
We're going to recycle as soon as everyone that would like to speak has had an opportunity to speak. Mr. Hassan, you're ready to batter up?
Yes, ma'am.
As long as we have people that have not spoken yet, we'll give them an opportunity first, and then we'll...
Good evening. Ben Hassan, 3529 Monte Carlo Drive. What I'm about to share is not so much for this body here, a couple of members was not here, but it's really for the general public here. And what I'm looking at here is a letter that's dated July 20, 2001, when Bob Young was the mayor. First, I want to give myself... Put myself in context about who I am in terms of... About being involved in the city. Commissioner Jared Brigham, Commissioner Sylvia Cooper, Moses Todd, and others can testify that I've been coming to the government 2004, 2005, and probably participated more than any other citizen in Augusta Richmond County, because not just going to commission members, I went to any event that was had in this city in that regard. So, now, back to this dated July 20, 2001. And what this was, this was a citizen advisory committee. And they made advise to the... They made advice, suggestions to the commission. Who were the members on that commission? William R. Thompson was the chairman, Marion Barnes, Nathania Charles, Barbara Gordon, David Hudson, Rob Zetterberg, Sammy McGraw, Mallory Milliner, Quincy Robertson, Paul A. Sanders, and Jimmy Smith. This group made a conscious decision, and I think all those are citizens that many of us know them, or know a great majority of them, but this body decided to vote on issues and take it back to the commission. And anything that they could not get unanimous support on those that was present, they did not bring it forward. They discussed giving the mayor more power. They discussed more of giving the administrator more power. They discussed the city budget. They discussed quite a bit of things in terms of what they thought would make the government much better. In their final report that they made, here's what it suggests. Increase personnel and personal authority for the city administrator. Provide for reelection commission after two-year waiting period. Serve for two-four-year terms. Provide for removal of a member commissioned for serious ethical violations. Provide for review of charter every four years or non-election year. I'm going to jump on, because I don't want to abuse the time. But however, that's what they recommended to the commission. But I thought was most important is something that many of us struggle with in terms of while the city has not grown. This is my opinion, and I consider my opinion to be a professional opinion in terms of because I've been engaged so long. When I look at Columbia County, when I look at North Augusta, cities around us growing. And here's what Mr. William Thompson said in his summary. He says, "Since our meetings were open to the public, you are most likely aware that our committee spent a significant portion of our time addressing the race relations issue. I believe without exception that each of us would acknowledge that this is the most daunting obstacle facing our community. It is an impediment to our economic growth, as well as the general advancement in a number of other areas that are critical to the quality of life. Therefore, we strongly urge the establishment of a race relations committee as outlined in our report. However, our experience also revealed that the private sector would be necessary in improving race relations as well, as I hope that business, civic, academic, and other leaders in Augusta will take this issue seriously and become part of solutions. Cities such as Atlanta and Greenville have not permitted this challenge to stand in the way of progress. The leaders of Augusta should accept no less." What is the moral to the story? The moral to the story for me is, these good people here who are on this committee, I don't think there's anything that they can put together to get us to where we need to go. I think this issue here has to be addressed. Just do we need to clean up some things in the charter? For sure. But I think for the most part, we cannot get around this issue. By the grace of God, he's put us where we have a diverse governing body, and we're going to have to find a way to deal with it. Columbia County don't have that. North Augusta don't have that. We have that. We have to find a way to deal with it, or we're not going anywhere. The change in this, you've got the same people, whoever you put on, based on what you do here, is going to come back the people out of the citizen's array who have the same mindset, no matter what they look like. So, until you deal with the issue at hand, we're going to find ourselves in the same place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Can I pause for a moment to acknowledge one of our committee members here, that Ms. Robinson? You don't want to speak anymore? Okay. All right. Sorry. All right. You've heard a lot from a lot of people. Come on up and speak. That'd be wonderful. We're going to switch gears in a minute after everybody's had an opportunity to speak. You go first.
All right. Excellent. My name is Alexander Marshall. I am a college student, currently at Mercy University, and I live at 3991 Madison Lane, just for the record. The reason why I wanted to speak to you all is primarily because the problem with the city of Augusta is there's not a chief executive. We have a lot of chief administrative... We have a lot of... We have administrative services done, but it pertains to someone who makes key decisions like that directly impact the direction and the vision of our city. We don't have that. And for the past 30 years, the city has been declining, shrinking, and falling behind because we don't have someone at the helm directly to direct the actions forward. And since we've been working under this thing where we've been having a whole bunch of different commissioners, a whole bunch of different thoughts and ideas, it's been dragging us down and even causing our young students, our students, our young people to look to leave the city, because there's a lack of opportunities here, because of how held back and how scarcity-minded our city is. Because we don't have any type of vision, and we're constantly thinking about the race issue. There is a race issue that is prominent. However, the city is currently being ran by primarily black directors, department heads, and all of those things. I feel like there's a lack of diversity. That's the problem. There's a lack of diversity, and there's a lack of executive authority. That's what we need to change within our charter. That's how we can move Augusta forward. All right, I'm going to be quiet now. I'm going to sit down.
So, many of you who have made comments tonight, you're going to be very happy to know that about, what'd you say, 80% of what some of the concrete suggestions are already in the mix of what we're working on. So, you will see as we move further along down the chute, we'll be bringing documents back to you, going to continue to have meetings just like this so people can come out and speak. And I think you'll be happy. I'm very optimistic about where we're going. I know some of the folks on the committee may not be, but I'm starting to feel pretty good about it. Thank you, hon.
Hi, I'm Monique Braswell, 2831 Fairmont Street. I have a question to the committee chair and to Vincent University. You all are saying you want public input as to what's going on. I live in one of the biggest voting precincts, District Five. Why aren't you all going to every district instead of the three that you chose to go to to get public input? I shouldn't have to come to Warren Road area to this district to have my comment made. I should be able to go to somewhere in District Five to have a say. District Four, District Two. And I need to know how y'all chose the districts that y'all were going to have conversation in.
We didn't choose it by districts. We chose it by public facilities. Tomorrow night, closer to your home, there's one at Diamond Lakes.
But I voted District Five.
What is magic about District Five?
Because District Five should have an input. All the districts should have an input...
They should.
...on what's going on. We have a lot of seniors that can't get beyond...
Understand.
...District Four, District Five, District Two.
So, the community center in District Five is which...
What I'm here to say is that we should be doing it in every district. Every district should be able to have a say in it. You all represent every district. Every one of you up there are coming from a different district. So, just my opinion and the people that I've talked to.
The way we chose the three we did was we went around, we wanted to have... Earlier in July, we got aced out of that because of the ongoing PSC elections. We elected to have it at public facilities, and that really severely narrowed our options for various reasons. Maintenance, being used as an election site. Our clerk worked like a crazy person to try to work with the folks to make that happen. And that's how we wound up with the sites we wound up with.
So, I just want to be clear that the only reason why we only had these three sites, because there was nothing else available?
No. I think this committee is putting in a tremendous amount of time. For us to go to eight districts is probably not feasible. We have young mamas. We have people taking care of parents. And so, the possibility...
My point exactly. We have people taking care of parents that can't come all the way over here.
So, we'll hunt the next public meeting. We've got a long bit of runway in front of us.
Okay.
And there was no real science behind why we landed here. It was because these were the only facilities available to us in July of 2025.
In July. So, there is an opportunity for you all to look beyond. That's all I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me give a little bit more clarification for you, Monique. The reason we... One of the additional reasons we chose these three facilities, because typically and historically, those are the three venues that people are used to going to for town meetings, and it just made it a lot easier, and it just made it a lot... It made more sense. If we always choose... Normally, we do the Linda Beasley Room. That's always, when they did the vote, for the mayor to have the vote, that was one of the ones. But we couldn't use... But we couldn't use the Linda Beasley Room because of the PSC elections. That's why we moved it to the chamber. They normally always have these kinds of hearings at this facility and also at Diamond Lakes. I think you're right, but for, for the economy and for something that makes sense, having three separate meeting places in three separate areas of the city, it's worked in the past.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to remind, remind everybody...
Mr. Coleman, go ahead and speak into the speaker. Come on over here.
I'd also like to remind everybody that every one of our meetings, every other Thursday, is online live. And they, uh, the IT has also put a survey on there that anybody in any district community can, can voice their concerns. So we're trying to get everything out there to the public, no matter what district you're in, and looking for your input. Fill out the survey. And, uh, I also like to remind you that all of us are up here volunteering our own time. And in order to have a, a meeting in every district, it puts a lot of stress on, like me, I had to rush off of work today to get here. But we're at the civics, I mean, at the Marble Palace every other Thursday, and it's online. All you have to do is go to AugustaGeorgia.gov and just go to CRC Meeting Live, just like the commission meetings, and you can watch it. And I would strongly recommend everybody fill out the survey that's put online. There's questions on there. You can, you can also have comments on, at the bottom of it to voice your concerns, no matter what district you live in, no matter what kind of time restraints you have. We know a lot of people can't get to the meetings because of other obligations, family, disabilities, and things like that. I'd just like to remind everybody of that. Just go to AugustaGeorgia.gov. They've done a really good job putting everything on there. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Ms. Robinson.
Excuse my, my little gremlin here. Would it potentially be helpful, because I know to get all eight of us to do this in eight different districts is a challenge, would it potentially be helpful for each representative, representative of their district to have a meeting of sorts in their district? Would you think that would be helpful? Ms. Braswell? Okay, thank you.
Any other takers? Here's Pat, and just come on up.
My name's Pat McMahon. I live at 2613 Bellevue Avenue. And unlike a lot of other people, I've got a question that I need answered. And I've had several people that, can you hear me now? Hear me now? Okay. Uh, I've had several people have asked me this question over and over, and I have not seen anything mentioned in any of the newspaper articles pertaining to this. And that is, if you go with a strong mayor, how do we prevent the problem that we had several years ago before Mr. Garrett was voting in? Number two, are there any provisions for the gang of five problem being eliminated if that occurs again? And that's what I need answers on, so I can tell everybody the answer.
One of, one of the things that we are looking into, and I, I think what you had just stated is shared on this committee as well. Carl Vinson, one of the things we put on their plate is to come back with best practices in other cities on how you check situations when citizens are not happy with the way things are going. Be it a recall, be it, uh, citizens' ability to, to really get signatures together and do lots of things. So, I asked Dr. Faser, he said he's not prepared to speak to this tonight, but it is coming in one of the future meetings about that very topic. I think that's the case. Okay, Ms. Robinson?
One thing to keep in mind is, even though we are evaluating the potential forms of government, that doesn't necessarily mean it will change. It just means we're evaluating the information we have in front of us to make sure we're doing what's necessary going forward to grow the city. So I would hope to calm some folks with that thought process. Just because we're looking at different forms doesn't mean we are going to change it. It means we're evaluating things. So that's why your input is incredibly important. I was fifteen when the, uh, city consolidated, and I remember distinctly the conversations had in church about the, the issues surrounding it. So I want to put everybody's minds at ease with that regard to that, you know, it's not necessarily that there will be a change so much as we're evaluating if there needs to be one. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
I want to respond to her comment. Things, if we're doing all of this and there's gonna be no change, why do it? And if, if Augusta was working, we will be an example for the other jurisdictions to follow. And the mere fact that we have experts showing us what other models are implies that things are not working as they should be. So we're doing, there has to be some change, because if there isn't any change, we've wasted so much money, we've wasted so much time, that doesn't make sense. And, and people are criticizing the city for wasting money. So we will be doing it, we will, we'll be doing it all over again, so that doesn't make sense to me. So I'm expecting some change.
Mercy, if I can, if I can respond. So, Dr. Page, just to clarify, I don't think anybody's saying that there's not gonna be any changes. I think what she was communicating is, it may not end up being recommended to the voters that there be a complete overhaul. Maybe if we fix this one thing right here, it can lead to the results that we, we desire as a community. So that, I think that's all she was trying to say, just to clarify. And also, Carl Vinson has already made numerous recommendations that we as a committee have already voted on and accepted to update our charter. But as far as form of government, we're still learning about all of them in the Form of Government Subcommittee, so we can't, we can't state what we're going to do moving forward. But we may not change the actual form of government. That doesn't mean that anything in there won't change. I just think it's too early to say because we haven't learned about all of them. Does that make sense?
We will have learned about all of them. It's on Thursday's agenda. They're bringing fifty academic papers for us to go through. Thursday. Yes, ma'am?
No, it was Mr. Riles next. JR, didn't you want you next?
Okay.
Were you stopped? Oh, wow, it's so loud. Um, I wanted to, again, reiterate that I do think that we have to talk about some heavier topics, such as the direct laterals of gentrification downtown to how we handled that in New York City back in the day. I mean, historically, the exact same patterns. Um, I do think people have given tons of advice to people in Augusta. I see you all as workers. Uh, people have shown up for their community, but you will be giving advice to people who will then be making those decisions. And for them, I want to say, a lot of people lack trust that even with advice, that it will be taken and utilized and worked for and by our people. Um, and that is because, for example, if we look at downtown right now, um, there are buildings that don't even open to fire code. Serpent Sage, Michael's Emporium, Hemethy have doors that actually do not open to fire code even. We have open and rotting buildings. And we don't know the owners, I'm not really sure what the answer is, and that happens way too often. Why do we have rotting buildings downtown? Um, we have homeless issues, and right now, I'll tell you a huge juncture of that, is lack of public transportation. There has been people that could have been homeless, and it simply took neighbors coming together and bridging the gap because they had no tenants protections. They were working, they were gonna be late on that payment, and they were gonna evict them immediately. I have a neighbor across the street, a blind man. His father died, and now they're gonna kick him out within a month. So at this point, I think that I, I respect you as advisors, but I also say, we are with you to say that I hope your advice is taken, because it, it's been there, and it has not been taken. And we can work outside of systems. I want you to let you know, you can feed your neighbor. You can show up for them, and we can lateral these systems easily when they don't work because we want them to work because we listen to each other. And I hope even you will remember that, we can make these solutions. We do not have to rely on systems when they do not represent us. And that's that.
My name is Jane Riles. I live 4006 March Street, Augusta, Georgia. Uh, I think, when you say a strong mayor, I think a strong mayor, we went through that before, when we had a mayor. And what happened is, it broke the city. Strong males, believe it or not, bring on corruption, because it's hard to get them back out of the office after they done did the damage. So, another thing I want to know, would this committee making the decision, would you take it back in front of the commission for them to approve it, or y'all gonna take it straight to Atlanta?
When the, when the, uh, city commission issued this challenge and was putting the committee together, those were the terms. This committee would draft something, it goes direct to the legislature. The legislature can do, can throw it away, they can cut it in half, they can do serious surgery, or if there was an upswell of people that liked the changes we were proposing, they would then vote to put it in front of the people for a vote.
Yeah, but I think that's unfair to the, the citizens, because they collect, they elected these officials to do that job. You know, it's alright, they have advisor role, but to do the real job, they're supposed to get off their tail and go to Atlanta, not y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Powell?
Um, one of the things I think has been misconstrued about this committee, we cannot change a thing. We can make recommendations, and only recommendations. They will then go to the, uh, state legislature, as the chairwoman just said. They can pass those recommendations, or they can cut them up and throw them out. And then, the real change is gonna be made by you. It's gonna come back to the vote. And historically in Augusta, unless it's a presidential election, not many people come out and vote. It doesn't matter if you're voting for a commissioner or mayor, well, the mayor's vote was different. But the only thing we can do is go through the information that's provided for us and make the best recommendations from that information that we can put forth. Then it's gonna go to the legislature. They will look at it, they will go through it, and then it will come back to you. So the change in this government is gonna be up to you. Okay? So if you want grass cut, if you want a, a more transparent government, if you want a government that is physically responsible, then when it comes time to vote, if those options are in front of you, it's gonna be up to you to get your neighbors, your friends, and your enemies to go vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Todd? You're gonna be the leading off of round two.
There's nobody else, right? Okay. Madam Chairman, um, at the last meeting, I, I had a question for Dr. Faser. Oh, my name is Moses Todd. My address is 2747 Deansbridge Road, Augusta, Georgia, and I am the biggest candidate of my local government. Okay? In a constructed way. I've tried to, I understand the task that you guys, uh, the CRC have, and the challenge and the influences. So I've tried not to be as critical of the CRC. Uh, but I had concerns from day one, and the day one concerns was guardrails. As, uh, was stated by Reverend Williams, uh, I too were a part of the 1988 consolidation and, uh, led a delegation to, uh, the Justice Department on the, I think it was Dick Thorne Bird's Justice Department, George Bush I, uh, to oppose consolidation because I had a problem with the language and the proposed charter. In, uh, ninety-five, I served on a committee up with Dr. Ralph Walker, George Cunningham, Ju- Julian Miller, Julius Miller, Osborne, I'm sorry, Julius Osborne, uh, and Joe Green of, at AU, on working on, uh, the proposed consolidated government, uh, and the charter, and, and worked with Bill Costopin that was brought in to, uh, put everything together. I, I understand that Dr. Faser's, most of his work, even though he graduated from University of Georgia, is west of the Mississippi, if I'm, I think I'm correct there. Uh, and there's a big difference in government structures and government east of Mississippi and west of Mississippi. I rely heavily on Carl Vinson's professionalism and what they do in local governments. Uh, one of my questions, uh, last time was, which, uh, form of government have least malfeasance? Or, as someone spoke early, uh, corruption? And that question is important because the guardrails is important. We don't know when we're gonna have a rogue mayor again. I know Cy Fulton is going through some problems with a mayor that was arrested for trespassing. So mayors are, come from the general population, like we all do, and, um, certainly, we could wind up with a problem if we don't keep the guardrails in place. I know my time is running short, so, uh, I'm also chairman of the Citizens Cemetery Committee, which is the city-owned cemeteries. And if I was gonna request anything, uh, from this committee, it would be to, uh, structure the cemeteries back into the city government, uh, committee versus coming through a recreation budget or something else. So that's one thing that I would suggest that you look at. I would also suggest that you look at a budget for this committee. Who is paying for all this? You know? So this committee need a budget in order to function or operate properly. So, those are my comments, uh, you know, tonight. I, I will speak to you Thursday. I think, I think I'm on the agenda, and one of my questions is just about the white papers, so I'm glad that you're bringing those forward. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers that would like to be heard? I would love to launch into, Ben, you're gonna come on back. I would love to launch into what kind of a city in a perfect world would you like to see? Because every good plan begins with a dream.
Thank you, ma'am, for allowing me to speak again, being Hassan again. Um, just want to make mention, through all of the, the meetings as we was, as, as the commission, which includes the mayor, um, was putting this process together, at, at no time and place was it ever said that this body would represent the citizens of Augusta Richmond County in Atlanta. Never, never even discussed. Now, I won't question what was signed on March the 11th, because some of the commissioners, well, the, the big deal on March 11th of this year was the fact that they were trying to make sure that this document went at least twelve months, because they had documents gonna start in January, it hadn't started in January, and so now it's March 11th, so they moved the timeline from March to March, and it was focused on that was the conversation. The conversation actually started on March the 4th. On March the 4th, at the one hour and forty-minute mark, there was a question... On March the 4th at the 1 hour and 40 minute mark, there was a question by Commissioner Francine Scott, and it was to the attorney, interim attorney, he answered the question and what part of that answer was whatever the committee does, whatever the committee, it would come back to you all and you do what you want with it. 1 hour and 40 minutes, check it out. 1 hour and 48 minute mark, Commissioner Tony Lewis, same thing. No, it's going to come back to you all and whatever you all decide to do with it is up to you all, almost verbatim what I'm telling you. So March 11th, when they signed, when the resolution was signed, because on the revolution, on the resolution, I'm sorry, might be a revolution though, resolution, resolution, 15 is talking about come back to the commission, 16 is talking about going up to Atlanta, 17 is talking about passing out to everybody in the state legislature and everything, 18 on that very same resolution is talking about a referendum. So they're so busy arguing about getting the date right that I think it actually was an oversight. Now, can I argue about they didn't sign it? They definitely signed it. I can't argue about that. But for a conversation about a subcommittee representing the citizens of Augusta Richmond County, no. If you are a neutral citizen, if you are a bunch of citizens and you took, and done this on your own volition and just knew something needs to be done, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But based on how you were selected or elected and how people, because some commissioners might have chose different people if the restraints hadn't been put on them. So you took away people's rights and you empowered other people to like the previous commissioners, Mr. Rouse said, that now they're going to ask you all to do the heavy lifting what the Augusta Commission should be doing. Because in 2011, that's what they took it back to, is 2001, they took back the Augusta Commission. That's whose job this is. And I just want to just say that as well. Thank you.
For the people at home, if you just
Yes, ma'am.
Name and address.
In the book of 328 Telford Street here in the city of Augusta. I came before the last meeting. One of my previous, previous spokesmen said that they were around during the initial charter and played a role in what we have today. I presently lead the Baptist Miss Conference of Augusta, which is 67 preachers and pastors. Back during that time, the Reverend Nathaniel Irvin and Dr. Kenneth Bruce Martin and the Alt Church played a major role also in communicating with the Justice Department and we are where we are right now. I presently lead that same group. And most of the men and women trust myself and some of us here in this room to come back to them and share what we believe, what we have heard each Thursday when you all meet and each community setting. Falling up behind what Commissioner Hassan had just said still leaves me where I was the last meeting and why the majority of the community do not trust this process. He has just given you timestamp and date of what occurred in a commissioners' meeting and what you all received by way of resolution is not the same. It's because of those things that the group I lead and will go back to them and share that I still have a distrust. And when we get back and share with them, I will share the distrust based upon the facts. And I promise you that at the right time, we will come out as pastors and leaders in this city and not be with whatever you all come up with until we address the misconceptions between what happened on record and what you all have by way of resolution. This will not go away until we get some resolution. So again, no matter what you all come up with, if that is not resolved, I will lead my group to oppose everything you all put up.
Any others would like to come speak? Absolutely, come on. Jerry, we almost need to issue a assistant professor degree or something. Wait, now, can't quite hear you.
Turned it off, okay. It's on, okay. I'm Jerry Brigham. I live at 2904 Pleasant Cove Court. What you just heard is the basic issue. This government was built on mistrust from the very beginning. It has not changed. It is not going to change with this attitude. Either we're going to find compromise as an entire community or we're going to continue to go down the same road we are on now. Now, that's a fact. I don't care how you fix it. Y'all are independent citizens. There's such a mistrust of the commission. Who on the commission would want any resolution sent to them to send to the legislature? They, y'all need to send it directly. We don't need to have any political influence, as if we don't have political influence. We've already got a mistrust, don't see anything changing, not likely to see anything changing. We've already been notified that we mistrust, that we're going to oppose. Well, I can oppose. I don't want to. I want to find something that's going to work. As for this community not growing, yes, we got 200,000 people that we had in 1995. We'll have 200,000 people in 1930 more than likely. It's because we're not having new people move in. It's not because the economy isn't working. If it wasn't working, the statistical area would not be growing. It's growing, so something's working. You would think everything happens in this community happens in Richmond County? You better wake up. It doesn't. Yeah, we're the lead county. At the rate we're going, we're not going to be, but that ain't based all on government. We got realtors that move people out of this city left and right because they can make more money in a neighboring county. We got, we've been under a court order to desegregate the schools in Richmond County in 1971. That is when the population of flight started, and it has not stopped. And you want to fix Augusta? If you need to fix the economy, fix the school board. They need fixing. You, I can, I've been there, I know. That needs fixing if you want to change things. It's not just this recommending body, it's not the recommendation, it's not the county government, it's the community needs changing, and we need to figure it out. And I guess I'm finished.
I don't believe it, Jerry. Anytime, would love to hear from you. How about, is there anybody else that would like to render a comment? We'll do our best. Yes, sir. Mr. Wimberly.
This is the troublemaker. Everybody made some great comments out here. And I'm a student of Augusta because I moved here. And before I even moved here, I studied Augusta. And just like the former commissioner just said, one of the first thing I noticed back in 1990, that you had a segregated school system. And what I was told then that I need to move, before I even got here, that I need to move to Columbia County. I just heard tonight that there's a belief, or at least there's a statement, that the city is ran too black. Well, was the statement that coming up to saying Columbia County is ran too white, it's not there. So what the mistrust is, is black and white. Now, you could sit there and say, no, no, I'm good with black folks or I'm good with white folks, but you're not good with yourself because you're not being honest. Our county, our government can run just as efficient on the inner race. The key is, are you taking care of all of the people? That's the main concern. Now, the other night Reverend Booker was talking about word on the street. Well, let me tell you, the word on the street is exactly what you're talking about tonight. What is going to happen with what we decide? We're going to sit here and we're going to grab each other by the throat to come up with something that we're going to put on a piece of paper to hand up, but it's the word on the street, the decision is already made, that is, the legislator is not your local delegation, but it's a couple of individuals up in Atlanta that is going to make the decision and they're going to put it in as a bill, and the bill is going to be voted on by every elected official in the state of Georgia, and Augusta will have to make the final decision. That's the word on the street. So now, the troublemaker is just telling you, we got to learn how to trust each other. And don't come here and say, we don't want to talk about race. You got to talk about race because that's where your mistrust lies. Thank you.
You're not that much of a troublemaker now. How about who else has comments? We'd love to hear from you.
The assumption, so I'm asking for clarification, again, Alex is the end of Marshall here, just for clarification. So you all are sitting on the board. Y'all have been chosen by the people, the commissioners that we as the citizens elected. So we chose the people who we elected to be, to serve us, right? But we don't trust who we elected? That doesn't make sense to me because how are you going to choose somebody that you don't trust? And then they choose someone on your behalf because you elected them to do that job, but we don't trust them? I think what the problem is, I think it's just a scarcity mindset and that was holding us behind. I understand, Mr. Wimberly, race is an issue, especially like now, it's more prominent and it's more pressing than ever. However, you sit on a board that's black, white, have all different colors and stuff like that, but do you trust your fellow board members? Is it because of the color of their skin that you don't trust them? I don't think that way, there should really be something that we should decide of how we want to move our community forward. While you've chosen to represent your district, you represent every single person inside the district, whether they're purple, brown, white, green, yellow, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter the color of their skin, that's who you represent. That's how we can go and move our community forward, not because I'm white or I'm black. That's how we move Augusta forward. I mean, we've been talking about the race issue for 70 years. The school board is desegregated, but the school system's terrible. It sucks.
Okay, Moses, go ahead.
Marcy, Madam Chairman, excuse me. I, I'm thinking back to some comments that was made in reference that we're dysfunctional or that we're broke. I think that 90% of all of the motions presented to the commission on resolutions is carried. I know that Augusta tomorrow feel that they need more attention and probably most of the citizens of Augusta Richmond County feel that way. But I do recall that out of their American Rescue money, that they were given $500,000, I believe it was, for having paid for cleanup downtown. There's no other area that's been given $500,000. So I don't, I don't understand the dysfunctional side of it, that we're dysfunctional. Do we have deficiencies? Yes, every government do. But dysfunctional, I wouldn't say that we're dysfunctional. And, you know, those are my comments, that this government is working, the garbage is picked up, you know, there's, there's issues on it. The drafts issue, you know, has been one that's been with us since '08 when the housing bubble burst and they restructured the engineering services department. And we're trying to do things that we don't have, well, we have, I guess the way I'd explain it is the guy that was wanting to have a suit made. So he bought the material in Augusta, he go to Atlanta, and the guy in Atlanta say, I might get you one suit out of it. And the guy said, no, I was told in Augusta that I could get three suits out of it. So, so he said, maybe we can stretch two. So he gets to New York City and he's going, he walks in there and he says, you know, I need suits made, two suits made. The tailor says, we can only get you one suit out of this material. He said, back in Augusta, they told me I could get, you know, three suits made. And I'm going to get the story mixed up, but the, at any rate, he said, well, I think I got it backwards, but the punchline to the story was that you're not as big a man in New York City as you were in Augusta, Georgia. So I know I messed the joke up, but the bottom line, you know, lighten the situation up a little bit, that, that I'm sure that everybody feel that they would like a larger percentage of the budget and it's just not there. We're not New York City.
Madam Chairman, since the young man wants to address my statement, I think I'd need to come back. My trust of anyone is based on, until they tell me, until they prove to me they should not be trusted. It doesn't matter black or white. My background says that all along. My life says that all along. If you do the right thing, I'm going to trust you to continue to do the right thing until you stop. When I made the statement about black and white, it's, it's an obvious fact. It's an obvious fact. It's not that I don't trust white folks, I do. And I'm not sitting here because I got an audience to say, a lot of my friends are white, a lot of my family members are white. So that means I could still not trust individuals in my family. Doesn't matter what their race are. So when you talk about what trust is, it's not necessary, do I trust Mr. Powell or do Mr. Powell give me information or deal with me that I need to trust him or distrust him? So on this panel, everybody is supposed to be trustworthy. But if you answer me one time with a false statement that you know to be false, that is called your credibility and is gone with me. I can't, I can't fall back and say, well, you did it once, you won't do it again. That's not a, that's not a good position to take. So in Augusta, as I stated, even before I got here, I was told, and I was told about white, black, I was told what I need to do in order to live comfortably, and that was to move to Columbia County. And those were the reasons.
I have to acknowledge Coach Bryant here.
With all due respect to everyone, our job here is to listen. I said our job here is to listen. And I would hope that the citizenry of Augusta would give us an opportunity to do the job ahead of us, regardless how we got there, but since we are here, let us do the best job that we can possibly do as we see it, based on the mandate given to us by our local commission and our mayor. I hear a lot of negative things, and all I can say is this, is that I have two daughters who graduated from Richmond County schools. who graduated from Richmond County schools. One Magnum Coon Lottie at Georgetown, the other Magnum Coon Lottie at Wake Forest. So to me, to just put all of Richmond County education in the same spot, it's a disservice to those in education that I've seen work their rear ends off over the years to get some things done. But I'm speaking not as a comment to discourage your comments, but all I would ask is that you give us an opportunity to do the job that we've been given and then at the end of the day, when it makes itself through the process, hopefully each one of us as a citizen will get an opportunity to vote on it as a citizen. And that's why, that's why we are here, trying to do the best that we can possibly do. And I'm confident, as diverse as we might be, and although we don't agree on everything, but nobody does, we just agree to disagree sometime. But I'm telling you today that I feel in my heart and bones that this committee will do the best job that they can possibly do with the help of Carl Vincent Institute, providing the expertise needed and hopefully at the end of the day, we will be able to make recommendation in the best interest of this city. Nothing more. I've mentioned it before, this ain't about conspiracy theories, this is not about negativism. It's about what we can do positively in this community to make this place a better place to live and to grow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I share those opinions and your optimism.
Madam Chair.
Chair, go first.
Can I be just real brief? And I'm excited to hear what you have to say again. I'm your form of government chairman. I turn 70 years of age next month. Forty of those years I've lived in Augusta, Georgia. I grew up in a Methodist church. I became Episcopalian when I married my wife Karen in 1983. In all of those years of attending a church, no one has ever told me how to think. They preached the gospel. I would encourage our Baptist ministers to preach the gospel.
Very brief, but just on this topic of functional or dysfunctional, I think the gentleman back here in the hat had a great point. And is anybody here to actually believe that the Carl Vincent Institute is going to Macon or to Columbus and rolling out Augusta, Richmond County's form of government as an ideal form of government? Well, of course they are not. That would be crazy. And again, the evidence that dysfunction is all around us, I would point you to 13th Street from Reynolds to Walton Way. The engineering department has just put in some beautiful new landscaping, okay? The ACE team is maintaining that landscaping from Broad Street to Telfair, but go look at it beyond Telfair, okay? It's overwhelmed with weeds. Why is that? Because while we're spending a bunch of money installing new, nice looking landscaping, we have no maintenance plan. Now, how is that possible? How could we spend all that money and not have a maintenance plan? Well, it's dysfunction, okay? It's all around us. One thing I, one point I want to make, it's not that they're bad people working in government, it's that they're working within a broken operating system where there's no accountability and that's what has to change.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If you just share your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Tracy George. I live here in West Augusta. I never would have thought that I then would be like a bridge of history before you all today. My grandmother, as was the case brought up, school board, ACRI versus Board of Education. I am then a product of Augusta, Georgia schools. I was born here in this community and what I am seeing now is disheartening. I will get to the point of that. Another way that I then bridged the history of this process is while I was in college, I served as a governor's intern and actually happened to be a little fly on the wall listening when this charter was then reviewed, never then thinking I would be sitting here as an adult in my city watching this unfold. At that time, the conversations going back and forth as they are now, very heated and passionate. It was stated, we would not have a strong mayor because those elected officials then trusted each other. I questioned, what was the change? Because when my grandmother presented ACRI versus school board, there was some erosion there and I'm like, when did the trust then get rebuilt? Unfortunately, I am back here in my city. I say unfortunately due to circumstances. I stand before you as a Gold Star widow, meaning, and then I had to then educate the community of why that makes sense. My active duty husband passed away. They asked me, where in the world would you like to take your family? I had plethora of choices, as we know, this world is huge, vast. I looked then back at my city and I am here. We've been back home now eight years and I've tried to, over and over, figure out a way, a plan to navigate. It has been hard. I have young children. They're in the school system here. They're at prominent schools and I don't believe that they're truly thriving the best that they could because of those programs failing them. I don't then blame just the school system, I blame the city at large for that status. We are reflective of our communities. I am now living in a community where I did not grow up. I was raised, my grandmother lived around the corner from TW Josie, which then brought the whole case. Her kids had to walk to school to Laney, making no sense whatsoever, walking past a school to get to another school. I am then the product, like I said, C.T. Walker. I was bused to school from South Augusta. I didn't then want that for my kids, so I planted us in what was supposed to be a prominent side of town. Yet I am let down even then with that. We got hit hard with Helene. In my current job of what I do as a community advocate, people outside of Augusta asked me, well Tracy, how are you guys doing? You know, Helene, that was back in October. I'm still struggling in my side of town where my city is telling me, hey, guess what? We're done with community cleanup. And I'm like, oh, really? We still got stuff all over the place. This is not going to work. We've got to trust not only each other, we've got to trust the process and to then hear someone say, I should not trust my valued leader. My grandmother and I, we came out of the church. So that's then what many of us, no matter our skin tone, the most segregated hour of the day, we're then going to trust what's being preached to us. I pray we get it right this time, you guys. I pray we get it right this time. Thank you.
My name is Edward Jefferson. I live at 3206 Darway Drive, Augusta, Georgia, in the South Side on Peach Orchard Road. I'm retired military. When I came here, a lot of my folks, people I know in the military wanted to go to Columbia County. And I said, no, I want to go to South Augusta or that area because there's a lot of military people there and we talk the same language. And I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I got up anyway. We trust you. Myself, I trust you. But let me give you a little history. Commissioner Mason had redistricting about 10 years ago and we went to all the meetings, we argued back and forth, the citizens at each other's throat, back and forth, and then we drew up the map. Some was given, some was taken. And it was a compromised map. But when that map hit Atlanta, they threw it out. We went through all the meetings. The group that was charged to do that did their job. That's why some of the trust is not there. It's not the board, it's not the people who are sitting here, it's the people who are sitting in Atlanta. Now, I'm going to give you another example. District five, District three. A couple of elections ago, District three, District five. We woke up one day, District three was cut in half, District five was ran from Jimmy Dyer's Parkway all the way down by Henry Brigham. That wasn't done by the people here, that was done by the people in Atlanta. So that's why the trust issue, we can sit and we can argue, we can talk, we can fight, but when we get out of here tonight, let's be one Augusta. And some of you have the ear for those people in Atlanta. Tell them, so we are tired of it. We are tired of fighting and bickering among ourselves. If you come up with a charter, we say, okay. You come in the last meeting and say, this is what we got, A, B, C, D. We said, okay, send it. Then it should come back the same way so the citizens of Augusta can vote on it without those gentlemen and ladies up there changing it. And I'm going to give you one more example. I'm not, I'm not, no, I bet not. That might be liable. So I'm going to be quiet. Thank you.
I just need a second, just a part of Privilege and Change as it relates to the gospel of Jesus Christ and the gospel in the Bible in its entirety. The prophets of old were charged to speak to government and that's what pastors, prophets do today as well. My charge as a pastor is to be concerned not just about their spirituality, but about their social and life. So whatever impacts my community, my members economically, spiritually, socially, you can bet that our group will be involved because we will speak for or against anything that impacts every area of their life. And that's what we have been charged with through the gospel of Jesus Christ.
So I need to change my address for a second. Monique Braswell, 864 Broad Street. So if you don't know what that is, that is the Richmond County Board of Education. I represent District five. Do we have some concerns and some issues at the Board of Education? We absolutely do, like any other form of government. But to blame the Board of Education for a lot of what's going on in the city government This election that we just had brought on four new board members. This board is turning over for the first time in 32 years to be able to fulfill. I have four kids that graduated from this system. I didn't allow my kids to be failing kids regardless if our system was failing or not. 85% of y'all didn't allow y'all kids to go into the, into the schools that my kids went into. You all are thriving on magnet schools, magnet schools. Take the kids to Columbia County, put them in private school, go get the $6,500 that the state is now giving y'all. How does that help our county, our government and our educational system? I've been fighting for this system for over 20 plus more years since the day I put my foot here. And I too was told to go to Columbia County, but I was also told I couldn't afford to live there, which I could not at that time. I say this to say, for me, if we want to have a better government and we want to have a better school system, we got to figure out a way to work together, not for the good of one set of people versus another set of people. Yes, Augusta is a large percentage in black, but because we a large percentage in black, we reach across the line. Well, I reach across the line and I know a lot of people, I know, we reach across the line. I don't care about black and white, I care about right or wrong. Blacks are wrong, whites are wrong. Okay? Jerry Brigham to me was the man that had a mouthful to say, and I've been watching him for years. He didn't care who you was. He was going to tell, remember that fight you had with Chris? Okay. He didn't care.
And if you're going to put words in my mouth, we'll have a disagreement.
But I didn't ever do that, Jerry. Jerry always spoke his mind like he did today. We do vote on the people, the people that we are hiring. We have a committee of people that bring these people forward to us for us to vote on. Do we know them, Jerry? We absolutely don't. We don't know them people, the superintendent just makes a recommendation, you know? But at the end of the day, I'm finishing, at the end of the day, we got changes and we got things that we have to do on the school board. Y'all stop blaming us for all of y'all issues.
Welcome, you can wrap up the night as we're about to. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Pittman. I live at 605 Stratford Drive here in Augusta. Thank you for being here tonight and I just wanted to comment that change at any time is a difficult thing for people. And I once heard it said that people will resist change until the pain of change is more palatable than remaining the same. Change is a difficult process and we're just in the middle of this process. And yes, it's uncomfortable, but we're hoping that together, working together, that as we participate and get involved in these meetings and give them the information that they need as to what they're presenting and what they're showing, how we as a community would like to see our future work and change, that when we get to the other side of this process, that it will be good for all of Augusta.
On that note, if I can ask any of you that have not already filled out the survey, that you please do, it is important, we do want to hear your thoughts. Those of you that don't have access to the internet, if you would, we've got, we passed out surveys Angela prepared and there's take care of that. And without further ado, also, we mentioned the website, which I don't think is up there, but it's augustaga.gov/crc. So it's the city web That has more information than you knew existed about cities and more to come because we're adding to it every day. But I would encourage you to stay on top of what's going at a meeting, help yourself and come on in, check out the date. Talk to anybody that has questions. And with that, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, for being committed citizens and being committed to our beautiful Excuse me, Angela, go ahead.
I just a woman over here in the green shirt by the door. If you're taking it home with you, we have no way to get them back from you. But this is one of the drop off points, correct?
Yes, it is.
So you can leave them with the person in the front office if you need to take it home to your neighbor and need to bring it back. But we will be picking them up July 30th because July 31st, they all have to be in, that's when IT is cutting it off. So for us to be able to input it into the system before that cutoff time, they'll have to be here by July 30th. I just want to make sure you guys know that I want you to go home and two weeks from now, you're like, I have my survey, so.
Also, on behalf of the committee, if I, if I could, can Also, on behalf of the committee, if I could, can Jeff Lewis and Reggie Horn stand up and take a bow for doing such a great job tonight about? We appreciate you guys. It's a lot of work to put this much AV together, as you can imagine, but we're very grateful for your input. All of you be safe traveling home, and thank you very much for coming out to be part of this tonight. Tomorrow night, if anybody else that you know that would like to participate in this, there's one at Diamond Lakes.